Okay, it's 7:30 and that's something supposed to happen at 7:30. Who's here tonight? Kim, Alan, Julie, Karen, Jim. Elaine's here. So who are we missing? Alternates?
Chris.
Chris is gonna be here.
Chris said he wouldn't be here. Right. He's the only one I heard from.
All right, so we've been cheated out of another, what's it called, hybrid meeting. I was really looking forward to that. But I thought it was important to go to Zoom with all this COVID going around, so we'll just have to wait till next month to see how we look on the big screen. Right? Anyway, we have to have to suffer through it. So anyway, let's open the meeting. It's 7:30 on March 9th in Roxbury, Connecticut, and I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Roxbury Zoning Commission.
May 9th.
You said March, but you meant May, I'm sure.
That's exactly right. May 9th.
Oh, welcome Candy.
Oh Candy, good Candy's here. Anyway, I'd like to open the meeting, call the meeting to order. And like I said, May 9th, 7:30 in Roxbury, Connecticut. And we'll start with seating the members. Tonight, we have Kim Tester, Jim Conway, Ellen Johnson, myself, and Elaine Curley, regular members, and Cheryl Rosen. Cheryl's not here, is that correct? So Candy?
She's not signed in.
Okay Candy.
Oh, I thought she did.
Yeah, she did.
Cheryl signed in.
Did we?
Cheryl signed in.
Oh, sorry. Okay, I don't see her as on the list.
Yeah, she's right there.
Oh, she's muted.
I'm not, I'm not seeing.
Oh yeah, muted, sorry guys.
There she is.
Hey, hey Cheryl.
Hi, how are you? Somehow I can't see everybody, but that's okay. I don't know. There's something screwed up with my settings, but I'll figure it out.
That was my problem too.
So we have all the regular members here and Candy and Cheryl, alternates. And we don't need to seat any regulars because we're all here. So let's start with approving the minutes of last two months ago meeting. First, the public hearing of the Woods special permit. Are there any corrections or omissions needed for that meeting?
I didn't see anything.
You didn't? Okay.
Um, I think there was something very, very slight. If I can figure out where it was. So many pages today. I think Bill, your name was just mentioned twice on something.
Okay.
It said Chairman Horgan, Bill Horg- oh.
Okay.
It was on page two Karen.
You're gonna have to be very specific because I forgot to bring my minutes home with me so that I could check while you're
Oh, okay.
So you're gonna have to tell me exactly where it is, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, it must have been, I hope I'm minded. This is probably not even worth it because it's such a minor thing. I think it's, I'm trying to figure out how to describe it to you. Because I actually printed this out double sided on mine, so it's a little bit strange.
Um. Cheryl, just count down the paragraphs from the top, maybe, and just tell me which one it's in.
Okay, um.
This is for the Woods?
You haven't, I found it.
Oh.
Oh, did you see it? It just says Chairman Horgan, Bill Horgan. It's on, I have a number two here. It's under, it starts on the page with motion to approve the application by the Woods Roxbury LLC for special permit.
Is that page one or two?
It says page two on what I printed out.
Okay.
And it's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine down.
Paragraph nine, okay. And I've repeated his name. Okay, I think I can see that out.
That was it.
Thank you.
Okay, is that it? So entertain a motion then to approve the meetings of the public hearing for the Woods.
Well, I make a motion to approve with the, with the change.
All right, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed. All right, the minutes of the Woods subdivision public hearing is approved. Next, the public hearing for the parking spot. Any corrections or omissions?
So I, I need to just back up for a minute. I think Elaine has to abstain.
I did.
Oh, you did? Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear that.
Nobody heard me, I'm sorry. Yes, I said Elaine abstains.
Okay.
Thank you. Karen, did you get that?
That was on that first motion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right, back to the parking spot opt out. Any corrections or omissions to that?
No, I didn't see anything.
None? Entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the opt out parking spot public hearing.
I'll make a motion, approve the minutes of the public hearing for the parking opt out.
Do I have a second? Second, right?
Alan, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Elaine abstains.
All right, and opposed? So the minutes of the opt out public hearing of March 14th are also approved. Next, we go to the our regular meeting. Any, any corrections or omissions for a regular meeting?
Uh, yeah, hi, it's Candy. Um, I found, well, page two that I found was regular zoning meeting, and it's page two. And that's where I found Chairman Horgan, Bill Horgan felt that the zoning commission was not yet ready.
Oh yeah, I see it.
To bring forth their ideas.
What, what paragraph is that on page two?
Okay, it's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, the ninth one down. The, the one from the bottom.
Okay, so that, that, that change should be here and not in the
Right, yeah, I didn't find anything in the woods. I found it here in the regular.
Yeah, it is there. You're correct.
Okay, I think, I think I can adjust that. No problem.
Okay. Any other comments, omissions, or corrections to March 14th regular meeting of the Roxbury Zoning Commission? Go ahead, Kim.
I was gonna make a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
A second?
I'll sec- second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
I opposed.
Elaine abstains.
All right, so the minutes of the regular meeting, March 14th, are approved as amended. So. Under our agenda now, the first item on the agenda is public comment. There's no public comment that I know of. Is there any public comment that anyone knows of?
No, Bill, not that I know of.
Okay, next, the Van Hebert, Sean Van Hebert's special permit application for Photography Studio. I talked to him today and he called Karen and he withdrew his application.
Oh.
That's correct.
That is correct.
Okay. So, did you have a comment about that? Someone? Okay, so on to the next item. Zoning enforcement officers report. John, you've been busy while we were vacationing for two months? You have some interesting things to tell us?
Hi, it's John Cody. Um, yeah, we're still pretty busy down there. Post the wetlands commission, we have another new house going in. Again, several pools and everyone else who doesn't have a generator is getting one. So the permit application's a little slower, but still rather consistent, still way higher than we have been in the past several years. On a different, different note, something more interesting. Elliot Davis from Minehill came in for his craft cafe permit. He wanted me to sign two forms from the state. First one was for the craft cafe, the second one was for an extension permit. I'll start with the extension permit. I obviously could not sign that because that was part of the COVID relief thing where restaurants are able to have outdoor seating and stuff like that. Elliot never had the ability. It was easy just to say, it doesn't exist, it's not applicable. As far as the craft cafe permit, several discrepancies were noted in his attempt to get this through and what the special permit actually contains. I had several conversations with Gail. She stands by my decision and we relayed that to Elliot. Three of the topics of concern that were there that are there. Maybe he'll come back with an amended permit, hopefully one that we can approve. His existing hours briefly close at 8 o'clock. We granted that. He wanted to change that to 11:00 PM. I can't sign that. He wanted to have free range, to have cocktails, all basically, I'd say 80% of the grounds of the facility, walking around across the road to the waterfall, all behind the place, et cetera, et cetera. That's not in a special permit that we granted him. He does have the 10 exceptions for special functions, which that's applicable, but nowhere is that part of the craft cafe that was discussed in the special permit that was amended that Gail and I reviewed. Along with that, he tried to get a patio in there and was hinting to have live music. Again, none of that was discussed. I'm back again with Gail. She, I asked her a question, just give me a brief summary of what my response should be. She helped me along with that. I forward that to Elliot. And that's where we are standing as far as applications for that. Looking forward to him coming, so something we could actually do if he wants to amend a special permit, that's fine. But there's, I just simply couldn't sign off on it. There, there's no way. Still on the Elliot topic. Friday night, Elliot had a function for Memorial Library at the distillery place. It was a lecture, which, you know, no big deal, but towards the end, he was giving cocktails away. Again, his special permit, according to the state statutes and all that, or his tasting room, not state statutes, but our regulations, he's not allowed to sell or give away drinks. It's strictly tastings. I was contemplating an NOV, but decided though, that's kind of ridiculous. It's a little bit harsh. So I sent him an email and copied several people. Some of you may have seen it. It simply said that, you know, further actions without permits and et cetera, that you're, that he drafted, that we agreed to. We would have to enforce because it's a violation of our regulations. He responded a lengthy email, which I just received. I haven't really read it yet. I'll dive into that tomorrow and I'll just respond, probably the same thing Elliot. Come in with an application that we could deal with and we're more than happy to work with you to get this through, like we have for the past six years that he's come in. We bent over backwards for him, so I really don't see it being that much of an issue. Um, other things. Wetlands complaints, you guys probably don't care about that, but there's been a slew of those. A different note. The Selective Office has decided that I am going to do the driveway enforcement or inspection aspect for that. It simplifies things because what most driveways go to wetlands. You get a whole review, we go over the whole thing, so it just streamlines everything and makes it a quicker, easier process and all the files will be all in the land use department, much more streamlined, I should say. That pretty much sums it. If anyone has any questions, please fire away.
John, you, you talked about the distillery a lot, but everything's under, nothing that we, that we as a commission need to be concerned with right now?
No, no, you know, I'm gonna talk to him tomorrow. If he comes in with, he has our response from Gail and I. It's pretty clear. I mean, it's, to me, it was clear from the day one he came in, the changing of the hours, the outside activities, the patio, the live music. None of that was ever discussed. If you want to bring that up, please bring it up. Put in your statement of use, do a special permit amendment and you guys can make a judgment call. That's, that's up to you.
Does anyone else have any questions or comments?
Well, my question to John was on the Friday night event. That he was giving away cocktails rather than conducting a tasting?
That's what it was advertised as. That's why I really didn't push the issue because it was ironically, it was on our town website. And I saw that and I was like, I didn't want to assume. You know, to go out there and issue an NOV or cease and desist, something along those lines, in my opinion, too drastic. You know, we could just send them an email describing in the future, et cetera, et cetera, that, you know, we need to be in good standing.
So do you think that it was a poor choice of words in the advertisement of it? That it was a tasting and not the cocktails?
Um, that's, well, again, I gave him the benefit of the doubt because, I mean, it said, we will adjourn to the to the distillery for cocktails. Pretty, pretty straightforward, but
Yep.
Yeah, maybe they were thimble sized cocktails. I don't know, but that's why I didn't want to push the, too far.
Okay.
All right. John, you're, you're to the ground, so you have to listen to what you say.
Yeah, anyone call me anytime. You know, open door policy. I'd love to relay anything. Ask me a question, I'm, you know, but
All right.
I can attest to that. He's very, likes to have company.
Too open, yes.
All right, thanks a lot, John.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Next thing on the agenda is review of zoning regulations, section one, which is the purpose of regulations and definition of character. I think these can be, the, the next 15, 20 minutes or however long we spend on these things could be interesting. They could be boring and they could be interesting. Hartford is not gonna go away. They keep making legislation. And Public Act 2129 really relates to towns and the way we run our towns. And they tagged the public act, they tag it as mandatory provisions. You know, we don't have to worry too much right now about mandatory provisions because we don't have the infrastructure yet, but things do change and sooner or later they're gonna affect us more and more. So we need to discuss and incorporate and try and rewrite for starters, provision, section number one. But before we do that, I think the word character appears about 40 times in our regulations. And each time it could be interpreted as something different. So I think we have to start before we go to section one, which is the purpose of our regulations. I think we have to discuss for a little bit the word character and, and put that, it's not in our definition. So if we, I think, unless you disagree, and I think we have to, unless you feel differently, I think we have to put character in our definitions. And does, does everyone agree with that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so to put it in there, we have to write it and Gail, Gail sent us some, you know, some, you know, an example of definition of character. And I think if we just read it, uh, we can possibly, I mean, being optimistic, if we went through this and agreed with the new definition and example of character, we could possibly even decide to have it written up and put it to a public hearing next, next meeting. Would that be right, Karen? Is that how it would work?
Um, Bill, it takes two meetings or two months to do a do the public hearing on changing the regs because we have to notify all of those planning agencies. So it would have to be on the July meeting.
Would it be?
For the public hearing.
If, if we really read this and liked it a lot and said, this is great, type it up. Would that be something it would to be, would be to our advantage tonight? To get a head start and get this kicked off?
Well, it would save us a month, sure. If we don't have the language finalized until obviously next month, June.
Right.
And the hearing would have to be in August, so, yeah, it kicks it down the road a month.
All right, so unless you have an objection, I'd like to just, there's only four paragraphs, only takes a couple minutes each one. If we read each paragraph and we're happy with it, we could say, go ahead and start the ball rolling and type it up, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so you are
What, what I'd like to say before we start, I don't see anywhere where it maybe I'm missing it. Our horizon lines? Our horizon lines in here?
Horizon lines?
Yep.
Say that again.
It says ridge tops.
Oh, you're, you're reading it now?
Oh, I'm so, yeah, I had read it before.
Yeah, it says ridge. Is that what you're referring to? Elaine?
Yeah, I'm looking, I'm looking, yeah. Is ridge top the same thing as a horizon line?
Well.
Well, basically, while you're, before you discuss that, let me just go back one step. And what character in the past has had an inference of being subjective. And the state wants us to get it out of the subjective realm and put into the objective realm.
Correct, yeah.
I, I always, objective begins with O and observation begins with O, so observation is something tangible that we see, whereas subjective is not, it's our opinion. So these, this definition of character has to relate to objectivity. So when we're, when we're critiquing it, we have to keep that in mind because that's what the state they're very, you know, the state wanted to remove the requirement to zoning regulations prevent overcrowding of land and undue concentration of population. And replaces subjective considerations with objective considerations. So from Hartford, it's Public Act, whatever that Public Act number is, I keep forgetting, Public Act 2129, it's gonna be targeting objectivity. So I just got you all off track, but that, when we look this over, we have, if we keep that in mind and keep it clean and clear objectively, this, this will work and, and we can use it. And, and I think, I, I, I crave on people correcting me. And I don't take offense to anything. I think if we get it into our recognition, to our satisfaction, we will have a nice definition of character that will apply to every place it's been sprinkled in our regulations. You wanna read it silently or is it better you wanna take have a three minute moment of silence to read this? And then
I have a question for Elaine. Elaine, what was the word you wanted to use?
Horizon line.
Horizon line.
I mean, technically, they're defined differently.
Yeah.
There's a, that is excellent. It's really an excellent layout of definition of interpretation.
Yeah.
She covered everything, but she didn't cover horizon, and that's a tricky one.
Yeah, it is. It could be right after ridge tops. Because it's connected, you know? I mean, some people would see it as something similar and not, you know? Be defined separately. It would also separate the two Rs, ridge tops, rock, proppings, but
You don't like that alliteration?
My tongue rolls around. Easier to read, yeah.
So, this is Bill again. So what, what we're starting to infer is each of these each of these items might need a definition of their own, possibly?
No, I don't think so.
Ridge tops is pretty well defined what it is?
Yeah.
And their horizon lines and
Yeah, I think if we get, if we get into too much what is the word for it, not nitpicking the minutia that actually could get us into, be more difficult, I think.
I found something that jumped out of me in this first new definition of section 20 definitions. The four words in the end, it said appearance and intensity of the proposed site.
Of proposed use?
Use.
Or proposed use, yeah. How how would what's the definition of intensity? That's a strong word. And we call it our personal subjective opinions of the word intensity.
Yeah, but, yeah. We just had that occur a few months back. The word intensity could fit right into that situation.
Which, which one Elaine?
Well, which?
We, we had a situation a few months ago that came up and the word intensity jumps out in my mind. In addition to size and scale.
I know what you're talking about, okay.
Okay, but it, you know, I, I agree with you, Bill, that it's more subjective than some of the other words, but what she's saying is the character is defined by these factors.
A lot of factors are tangible factors in this paragraph. Intensity is an opinion factor, do you think?
It's a good question.
All right.
I think it's an important sentence though.
Yeah, I do too. I think it's important to leave it.
It gives us a little bit of latitude to, for interpretation.
Yeah.
All right, you want to
Ask a question? Bill, sorry, it's Candy. Right. Okay, what are we using as definition of horizon line?
Well, horizon line is usually referred to as the
Yeah, a line from point A to point B across the horizon.
Well, it separates land
From land from water.
Land from water or land from sky.
I mean, land from, yeah, sky from land or water.
Yeah.
Yep.
I mean, is that understood? Because in okay, I mean, in photography, my horizon line is just line from point A to point B. So whether it's a tree line, the, the ground to the trees, so it, it depends on where you see the horizon line.
It could be high or low.
Yeah. Doesn't have to be land and, and sky, doesn't have to be land and water. I mean
Well, it's important to include it because it means something different than ridge top.
I agree. And in the definition in, in the definition, it does state the terms horizon line and eye level often used synonymously, horizon lines. Eye level refer to a physical visual boundary where sky separates from land or water. So that is part of the definition. So in our uses for land use, it makes sense that that's what it would be, wouldn't be.
I would argue it's, it's anything that's separate, you know, you can separate. That's all. I, I don't want to get into trouble by
Yep.
You know, trying to say, oh, it's only water and, and sky or, or land and sky.
Yep.
That's all.
Are you saying that ridge and horizon are two different, ridge kind of connotes height and horizon connotes anything that separates the ground from the sky, the water from the sky? Right?
Well, since we're, we're, since we've already, I think, I believe most of us have agreed, we don't need to define each term. I think we're okay. Right? If we're not gonna put in a definition of stone wall and tree line road and historic structure, we don't, also don't need to be too concerned about the definition of horizon line as long as we understand how it might apply to character.
Within the land use.
Yeah, within land use.
Okay, well, horizon and ridgeline are tangible, objective things. Shall we skip down for a minute to get the example of, of how characters use? Now, this, this example is taken out of, mostly out of what's in the regulations right now. With a few changes. So if you want to review that, then we have the new definition and examples and see if they're compatible. Have you read over the 624 and 624A? Have you read over the six two four and six two four A?
I just, I just need a minute, a minute. To read it again. So in here, it also states. That. Size, scale, proportion, appearance and intensity.
It also, it also has, uh. The last. Part of the last sentence. Uh, the last sentence shall not hinder or discourage the appropriate development and use. Objection property substantially or permanently impair the value thereof. That's, that's certainly something that's going to be hard to objectively. Apply also.
Mm hmm.
But here, I, I believe it's in our present regulations, so I forget what they said, but. Maybe I could.
If I, if I may, you know. In looking at section one and the things she took out. Um. There is a, something that talks about to conserve the value of buildings and that struck out, and I think we have to. We'd have to ask. Her if that. Could stay.
You said it was struck out?
Yeah, in the section one, in the, which we'll go over in a minute, but. Um. It is something that we will have, but that's, that's in a different portion of the regulations, so it's not the definition that, you know, that we're talking about right now. So the definition is one thing and then. Section one is something else, but it does. Make me question impair the value thereof.
I think she might come back and say. Shall be in harmony with the character of the applicable zoning district and conform. To the appropriate and orderly development. That. Uh, of the town and the neighborhood, I think she's going to say that covers it.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I don't know, but.
Right.
It's worth asking.
I do like the definition.
I do too.
You know, I think it's really very thorough. Um. And I do agree. With adding in horizon line, I think we could certainly. You know, if the word horizon line and phrase, you know, ended up in a design book, though, we'd look at it differently, we wouldn't look at it as land use, so. Since we're looking at it in land use, we can certainly know which part of the definition to utilize.
The, the word has been, um. Trust about in the past, so I, in, in land use, so I don't think there will be any confusion.
Yeah.
Um. But I agree with Candy, Candy, it's a different thing in art.
Yeah.
So adding horizon line. Isn't some dramatic or dynamic. It's, it's fairly, uh, you know, I'm fairly innocuous, innocuous, you think?
Yeah, because you're talking about ridge tops and then there is this idea of. Where things meet, you know, and it's like, um. Thinking about, uh, when the town decided to purchase the Nasterwich property at the corner Hemlock or Rocky Mountain and, um. And Wellers Bridge. There are vistas, certain vistas that the town, people agreed were important to maintain and. It's not just ridge top, it had to do with horizon line. You know, and how, where the ground. Met the sky and also the, the, the farther, um. Vista, you know, that kind of layering, so it, it was an, that's an appropriate term to use for that. Uh, that property.
Well, I think we should definitely put it in.
Sense, sense of cha- character.
Yeah. Well, we're gonna, you know. This is going quite smoothly, I think, uh, it's something we're going to have to discuss and decide on sooner or later, and if we can.
Yep.
If we, if we get this done tonight, that'd be wonderful. Get it ready to go to the printer and get it ready to present next, next meeting. For public hearing, two meetings later. Right? Looking at you.
Oh, I'm, I'm good with whatever, I spoke my, my mind, so. Anyone else want to add in, go right ahead.
Looking at Jim right now.
Yeah, I'm good with the definition, definitely. I think it's, it's very complete. Um. The example. I'm not really. Totally convinced the example is good. Um. Usage or choice of words.
Yeah.
Um, it's, uh, anybody's opinion. Whether it impairs the value or not. And people will say, yeah, that's going to. Impair the value and it's an opinion.
Yeah, and that's subjective. Which I, I don't want us to be.
But the definition, I think, is very complete.
All right, uh. Back to examples. Intensity to pro- propose use, there is intensity used again. That's borderline subjective also. If we don't have an intensity meter that we can go out there and measure it with. That's what we feel. It's our opinion.
Yeah.
Oh, I don't know, a, a proposed. One hundred and fifty-five bedroom condo development on a dirt road, would that be considered? Intensity of use?
Yep. I would say.
It, you can't say. You know, you can't, you, you can get around all the other descriptions, but maybe not intensity.
Yeah.
Well.
I, I think the. I think it's, I think it's an important statement because it's something that is. Valuable to us. Uh, as a town. And, but it's then, I agree, we might have to define it. I don't know what that, how would that look like? I'm pulling it up on, on my phone.
What if we sprinkle? Objective. In there. Because that's what the recommendation of the state was. Make things more objective.
So intensity in the definition, it says a measurable amount of a property such as force, brightness or magnetic field, that's not helpful.
But she used it, maybe she has another.
Yeah.
Application for the word.
I mean, I know what, what it means, you know, what she means by the amount, but it's, again, it's the measuring of it.
I think the difficulty is that when it. It, it comes in an extreme example, it's obvious for us to say objectively that's too intense.
Right.
It's when, you know, but it's on a continuum and it's just. Very difficult. You know, what's intense for you may not be intense for me.
Right.
If there were five of us. Then maybe we can. You know. Mix five ways and come up with. A fair opinion or fair interpretation. We're, we are a board. And that's why we don't have a dictator in the zoning department because we have a group that hopefully is fair to. To applicants and also fair to the town. Well, we don't want to get frustrated tonight and ramrod this through just to get it done. But we do.
Yeah, I think my question is to her is how, how do you, um. As a commission. How do we, um. Monitor and make a, make a, a decision based on. Appearance and intensity of the proposed use. You know, what's, what's going to, um. What's going to, uh, what, what regulations or what state statutes or laws are going to stand by us? When we make a decision.
Um. Guys, I just looked up, uh. A legal definition of intensity.
Yep.
And I think it's a little clearer. Here it means an objective measurement, here's the word objective, of the extent to which land may be developed or used. Including the consumption or use of the space above, on or below ground. The measurement of the use of or demand on natural resources and the measurement of the use. Of or demand on facilities and services.
Oh, I like that. That's good. All right, that's what she's coming from then, because she's.
That's exactly where.
What's your source camp?
Legal definition.
Where's?
I'm sorry?
Where, what's the source of that definition?
Just the legal definition of intensity, if you Google legal definition of intensity, it'll come right up.
Okay.
It came from the Law Insider.
Yeah.
No, that's what I'm reading. That's great, okay.
That, that is a fantastic definition because it's very objective, it's measurable.
Yep.
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
Mm hmm.
So should we plagiarize that and put that in our? Um, example?
I don't know if we need to, because we have something to rely on.
Okay, so we just have to remember that there's a good definition and we made our decision based on, on the definition we just heard.
Right, so, but do we define intensity?
It might be too. To do that.
Or do we just put comma as defined in, is defined by.
Or the legal definition.
But as per legal definition.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's all we need to do.
Yeah.
That's the easy way to do it.
Yeah. That solves it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep, okay, let's, uh. I like that too. So.
Yeah, that gets us out of that wishy washy, what is intensity, it's not brightness, it's not a measurement of, of anything else.
Yeah. That's perfect.
All right, so we add the horizon line and we have a good definition of intensity. Uh, what else is jumping out at us, anything?
I think everything. Can I ask, are we actually adding the words? As per legal definition to our definition?
I think so.
So after the last intensity in that paragraph, we would put a parenthesis and then. As per legal definition or something like that?
Yeah, or as per the legal meaning. Or as used in law.
Uh. I think legal meaning maybe.
Mm hmm.
What do you think about that? Instead of just saying as used in law, but.
Do we have to say anything more than by definition?
By legal definition.
Or if you just left legal out. Definition.
Then, then it's, no, that is not specific enough, I think then you get the definition I got, which had to do with, nothing to do with it.
Okay. So then we need to, we need to infer.
Yeah. Yeah.
So let's do that.
Yeah.
Karen?
I think so, so that's how we'll do it then, we'll say, um. Appearance and intensity. Uh. Then a parenthesis as per legal definition.
Yes.
Of the proposed use.
Yeah.
Okay. Got it.
Not a proposed use, but legal definition of intensity.
Well, it's, it's going to be a parenthesis after intensity, but then you still need the rest of that sentence, I think, right, don't we?
Yeah.
Of the proposed use, it, it's a little awkward, but. I think it gets the point.
All right, so you're adding horizon line.
Right. After ridge tops.
Right.
And, uh. The parentheses of legal definition.
Yeah.
And what about the last thing at the bottom of the, the last example? Permanently impair the value of therefore, thereof?
Well, that's separate, we don't, that's just a definite, that's just an example of how it's used in our regulations and our, which means our regulations. Might have to be adjusted, but that's separate.
So we could leave that in permanently compare the value thereof?
Well, uh, that, that's not part of the definition now, is it?
No, that's part of the example.
Okay, right. So that's a separate issue.
Yes. But we should be happy with. Both the definition and the example of this before we. Put it to print.
Not necessarily, I think that it just brings up that we might have to make adjustments to our regulations. It's bringing up a point here that. You know. That's, that we can't, uh. You know, I don't really like that last sentence. In there.
You don't like it, you said?
Yeah, the one that's in the, in the example. So which means that there's a part of our regulations that I'm not happy with. That's really what, what it brings to mind more than anything, the definition is just bringing up, um, uh, maybe something that might need, uh, updating. It doesn't affect the definition that we choose, though.
So if we left the example in as it's, the examples are in the regulations and have been for a while.
I think she just has this for us to look at, it's not part of the definition, these examples are not going to be. Included as part of it, it's just something that Gail wanted us to look at.
But those examples are in our regulations right now.
I understand. Yeah, and I'm sorry, I'm not being clear, um, she just pulled these up, my guess is, so that we can see how it's used. And for me, what it does is it brings up, um. You know, something that as we go through, as we're going to anyway, five, six, seven, that. There'd be something that we have to talk about in altering.
So let the example ride.
Yeah.
Example ride.
Yeah.
Put the definition of character in the definitions where it belongs.
Right.
How, how does everyone feel about that?
Does that make sense?
Sounds good.
Okay.
All right. Karen, so Karen will write this up for our next meeting. And we'll have something to propose for a public hearing. Correct?
We, I, I can do that, does it, um, do we think it needs to, um? Was there a question that we needed to have Gail answer?
No, not anymore.
Not anymore, okay.
This is, this is Elaine, um, I'm just wondering. Um, I'm, I'm a little bit confused. When we put in. Um. Brackets, legal definition, are we putting that in the regulation or in the definition?
Definition.
Definition. So the definitions are all at the end of the. Regulation.
That's correct, yeah.
Whoever you see that word in the regulation, you refer to that definition.
Okay, so we're not adding that to the, we wouldn't be adding that to the regulation.
Well, technically we are because we're putting it in the definitions and that's part of the regulations, but.
Okay. I get it, thank you. That was my only question, that was my only question.
All right.
So Karen, can we then, um, vote on this tonight and to say that that's what we want to do?
Sure.
Okay.
And then that, that starts the clock ticking and that will give us a public hearing in, um, July.
Okay.
So this vote, doesn't, if, if you have, if the minutes come up and we use a couple of words differently, that change won't affect our vote? Minor changes?
Well, I think we're voting on the final language tonight if we are agreeing.
Yeah.
And then that's what I go forward with and publicize and send to all the agencies and that sort of thing. And it also goes in the, um, legal notice.
Okay. And that legal notice goes out. Prior to next meeting?
No, it goes out after.
Okay.
It goes out about two weeks before the actual public hearing.
All right, so we're safe.
Right.
If there's some big mistake, we can change it.
Yeah, but.
Not tech, not technically. Not technically, if we vote tonight, then that's, that's, that's sort of it.
It doesn't seem to me like there's any mistake in what we've been discussing.
No.
It seems very safe.
Yeah, I, I think, I think it's good to vote on with those two additions.
Alright. Well, I'll entertain now a motion to, uh, to vote on, uh, this, uh, new definition of character.
Um, I make a motion to accept the, that new definition of character with the addition of, yep.
Horizon.
Thank you. Horizon line listed after ridge tops. And, uh, in parentheses after intensity. What was it? Use of, uh, uh, legal definition?
As per legal definition.
As per legal definition, uh, to be located right after intensity.
Second?
Second.
Jim?
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
All in favor? Alright, we have a new definition of character. And, uh, and it'll be written up and typed as we've just voted. And it'll be presented. We will, we will present it next meeting, the, uh, June meeting for public hearing.
Uh, July.
July, yeah.
July public hearing.
Uh, can we also get a motion to actually hold a public hearing in July?
What, what date is it, Karen? I think it's the 13th.
Hang on, I'm sorry, I do not have a calendar right in front of me here.
Yeah, I do, I have, uh,
Does anyone have a calendar?
I do. So it's Monday, the 11th of July.
Okay, so we'll need a motion to hold the public hearing on that date by someone and then second it.
Okay, I'll make a motion to, um, hold a public hearing uh, for the new definition of character, scheduled it, scheduling it for, uh, Monday, July 11th.
Second?
Yes, Elaine, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, we've approved a motion to, uh, hold a public hearing for the definition of character on Monday, July 11th.
Great. That's great.
Alright, well, we got something done. That's good.
Yeah.
Great, it's a, look, great to put a check mark next to it. You want to, uh, it's not, it's, you want to just, that went pretty good. You want to just take a start to get lengthy, you want to take a crack at, uh, section one purpose?
Yeah, I think with this one, this is, you know, there's not a lot of leeway here. You know, we, and, and this is not some, you know, I think if we start talking about it tonight, I don't know that we're going to get to the end of it, but, the things that I know from my conversation with her as well, that these are section one is directly related to state statutes and things that we have to include and things that were taken out uh, are no longer allowed to be in there. I think it's important that everybody, it's, it's important everybody understand it. Because it does make a difference as we look at applications going forward.
We, we might start working on it and find there, we might work on it and complete it and find that we have to make lots of changes.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm just, you know, we're gonna have to sooner or later, we're gonna have to do it.
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, I'm just, yeah, I'm just saying that there's not a lot of leeway here and things that we can adjust, but we can certainly
Yeah, well, they've, the, the state has certainly cross-referenced with, you know, Connecticut general statutes and given us numbers that we can look at, you know, for, uh,
Yep.
You know, and I have all these right here, I cross-referenced them all, so we can, when it refers to a Connecticut general statute, I have it right here.
Yep.
So we can answer questions. So it's just a matter, do we take a crack at this now or, and go halfway through it?
Yeah, let's start with number one.
Alright, you said it.
You want me to read it or is everybody good reading it on their own? It's up to you.
This is the, uh, red line purpose that in section one now, I think there are like eighteen items and section one now there are twenty-seven, so there are lots of additions. But some of them aren't really scary at all.
Yep.
Let's read number one. What's wrong with that?
I think it's good. And, you know, she's taken off the community throughout, so it makes sense in that it's Roxbury, so just to be much specific.
Can I put a check mark next to that? Informal.
Yep.
Alright, check mark. Number two, promote the health, safety and general welfare. What's wrong with that?
All good.
And, and wherever, wherever it's black, it's the same as it is now, isn't that correct?
Yes.
It's only the red where she's making changes and so we're just taking of the community off, okay.
Right, so number three is not changed. That stays, that's check mark.
Right.
Number four is given, that's changed. Check mark. Number five, formatted and not highlighted. What does that mean?
Oh, no, she just, she did something and then, then undid it, so it just showed up.
Okay, so five gets a check mark.
Yeah.
Six has crossed, uh, crossed out to protect the state's historic tribal cultural environmental resources. What's wrong with that?
Huge difference in meaning.
Yes, and you, um, that's the, uh, his, his, the state's historic tribal cultural environmental resources specific to the new, um, statute, I think it was I think it was twenty-one, twenty-nine. Um, but that was specific to all zoning in the state, so everybody has to add that one.
So that
So what you're saying is we can't, we can't use what we had.
No.
Say that again, Elaine. We can't what?
I'm asking if Gail is suggesting we absolutely cannot use that, what we had before.
Yes, because what Yeah, if you actually look down, because what, um, when you go down farther, that statement that she's crossed out negates the hope that towns will promote various housing opportunities.
Correct.
So in order to not contradict what's required to add, which is the housing choice, economic diversity, you have to delete that sentence.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
One point three point one two.
One point three.
Protect historic resources.
Yep, so that's so that we have the opportunity like mine hill.
Right, in the town.
Yeah.
Yeah, cultural and historic.
Correct.
Yeah, because that's specific to state historic.
Yep.
Basically, it just says, you need a really good reason to make the decisions you're making, yeah.
Exactly, yeah. And that's the state's idea too, is that they're
So I guess, are we checking it off?
I think we have to because
Yeah, you do.
What's wrong with it? To protect the state's historic tribal environmental resources. It's got to have a check mark.
Yep. But just to understand why the other is crossed out, so, yeah.
Uh, number seven is, oh, public is put in, other public, public has been added to number seven. Pressure for school's parks are the public requirement.
Yep.
Anything lurking in that word?
No, I think it clarifies it.
Alright. Number eight, yes, red, to regulate the percentage of area of lot that may be occupied.
Yeah, so here, this is where it's deleted because we can't conserve the value of buildings. Not anything that we can regulate.
Don't we have coverage somewhere in our regulations right now?
For? For what?
For coverage? There's some percentage. Do you recall, Jim?
I thought we did have something, yes.
I don't think
Either we do, and if we don't, this would tell us we need to.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't, I don't know where that would be. I don't remember that. Not that I know.
No, we had once looked at like impervious coverage and whatnot, but we never legislated on it, so I don't think there's, I don't think there's anything that specifically regulates the percentage of use on the lot.
I, I think you're right, Elaine. I, I don't think we have anything for coverage or for
Right.
So what would the percentage of area be?
That would be something we'd have to talk about. I mean, that's why it came up at the what, why that topic wasn't able to be implied or used during that former application, because there wasn't anything in the regulations, so.
I think it'd be easier to write a regulation with that because zone, that's a hundred and sixty thousand square feet. And, uh, a twenty thousand square foot house would be this monster. And it would only be covering one eighth of that property, so I don't think we have any problems in Roxbury about having a lot covered by a massive, would have to be a super massive ridiculous structure to cover any significant portion of a four acre lot.
I think it only comes up if we go for smaller lot sizes, then it's something that we would want to make an adjustment. But it does give us the opportunity to do that by having it in section one.
Well, sometimes it's not even the relationship of, I mean, it's, what about the guy that wanted to put the twenty thousand square foot house down at Gladys Camps? Remember that?
That's only fifty percent of one acre.
Yeah, I know.
A four acre lot, that would be twelve and a half percent.
That, that would typically cover all other structures too, though.
Right.
Yes.
Garages, accessory buildings, entertainment centers, pools, all of the above.
Right.
So this just gives us the ability to regulate.
Yeah.
Yes.
So what's, and then I have no concern about that.
Yeah.
Check that off.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I am, I'm good with it, so anybody else, so.
To regulate density of population and the locations and use of building structures and land for trade, industry, residents or other purposes, including water-dependent uses as defined by general statute, Connecticut general statute.
Water-dependent uses.
Wow, that's huge.
Yeah, it is huge. What's the water-dependent uses? Is that agriculture or is that? I can imagine it would be because it would be, it's separate.
Can you pull up quickly, uh, Connecticut statute twenty-two, A dash ninety-three? Everyone close to it?
Oh, this is, um, environmental protection, coastal management definitions. Public beach, coastal resources.
So that might include density along the Chappag.
Yeah, could, it could. Uh, water-dependent uses means those uses and facilities which require direct access to or location in marine or tidal waters and which therefore cannot be located inland, including but not limited to marinas, recreational, commercial fishing, and boating facilities, fin fish, shellfish, processing plants, waterfront docks, court facilities, shipyards.
So that's good, because it adds, it adds control.
It does, yeah, it does. Yeah, okay. At least we know what that means.
Alright, we checked number nine off.
Yep.
Number ten, to regulate the height, number story size of buildings and other structures. We already do that, don't we?
That looks good.
It's just rewritten, yeah.
Yes, yes, we do.
Okay, checked out. Eleven, to regulate and determine the, the size of yards, courts and other open spaces.
Now, that's better language.
Yeah, yeah.
What, what do we mean by courts?
Courts. Like
Golf, tennis courts?
Tennis courts.
Yeah.
I think maybe like open gathering spaces, kind of.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's just a generalized
Did we look it up?
Well, it says, huh, yeah.
Because we've never used that word before, have we?
A quadrangular area, either open or covered, marked out for ball games such as tennis or basketball. And there's the, you know,
Tribunal one.
Yeah, right, that's, that doesn't count, I know.
I don't think so, um.
Just trying to figure out how we actually do that.
I was thinking she meant like plaza or something, like a plaza. That's not the definition of court, but that's kind of what came to my mind of what she might have meant.
It says and other open spaces, so.
First glance, it almost seems like they're worried that these things might be too big. How can a yard be too big?
Yeah, I don't know.
How can open spaces be too big?
Well, they can be, well, okay, so I'll play devil's advocate here again. They could be, um, too big if they interfere with the development of housing opportunity. That just gives us a, I, I mean, I'm just throwing that out there. I don't know at all if that's what she means, but
That makes sense, Kim.
So, yeah, it's, I think it builds. It seems like things are in some sort of order to build
Right.
as we get to these others.
If we require so much open space that it limits the size of the development to the point of
Of being unable to build.
Right, right, okay. That's how I'm looking at it.
Yeah.
So should we, but should we clarify yet, um, to regulate, determine the size of yards, courts and other open spaces where required in our, would, the only place this could be applied would not be in subdivisions?
I don't know.
I don't like it at all.
Yeah, we, we can just put a question mark on that, because I'd rather know what she meant. Yeah, we, but we can just put a question mark on that because I'd rather know what she meant by, yeah.
I agree, Tim.
I, I don't.
Question mark is there.
Especially because she's crossed off those last words in it.
Yeah. It's a little. Yes, I'm, I don't know what she means.
So we're going to question mark that one?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, we have two to go on this page to protect historic resources and homes, monuments, schools and other structures. Lawson stuff will detract from the character of the town.
Guy, courts is in the law. But it's not defined. The word courts is in the law. It's in public act twenty one, twenty nine.
Oh, it is?
Yes, it is.
Oh.
Yeah, and it's not defined.
Oh, and it's not defined?
Nope.
We still don't know what it means. We should have it defined.
No, I know.
Yep.
I mean, it probably is basketball, tennis, you know, whatever. Or judicial.
Yeah, no, actually, there's a legal definition, you're right. It's an official tribunal, yeah.
Yeah, but the.
It's divided over by several judges.
Yeah, but I don't think it's that because it's preceded by yards. And then you have open spaces. So I don't think a judicial branch.
No, it's the wrong context, I agree. I think Kim's right. We don't really understand fully what she's intending here, so.
Yeah, but it's part of the law, so how do we get around it?
Well, I think let's just have her explain it, yeah.
Okay.
And then we might come up with a better language for it.
So which one are we talking about now that we want her to explain?
That was the third, one point, three point eleven.
Eleven, okay, we're up to eleven.
Twelve is the same, it's still good.
Yeah.
Wait, all right, and thirteen.
Did we, did we approve ten as of being okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, we've, we've done the first page. We've done thirteen out of twenty seven.
Oh, we didn't do thirteen, did we? To provide.
So we, there was no change to thirteen.
Oh, right, okay.
Good start.
That's a good start.
I mean, we, we don't, we've checked off the first thirteen.
Well, we haven't, we're questioning eleven.
Yeah, questioning eleven, but we're not, we don't have to vote on this tonight. We need, we might have more clarification, clarification needed when we do the second page, so. We'll stop that tonight just because of time. And we'll pick up where we left off in the next meeting.
That's good. It's a good way to do it, to go through it like that, and these are all new, so.
Yep, so the next, um. Okay, we got a definition and purpose. Next item in general is zone A. Which has been a pet peeve of ours forever. And it will continue to be. Because it really, we really can't address it without the big table and the big map. So hopefully that'll be next meeting. So one thing we can address tonight about zone A is. The term restrictive conditions. That determines what acreage requirement is needed for any parcel in zone A. And I asked Gail if she would elaborate on restrictive conditions and she didn't get back to me.
Oh.
So. I don't have an answer to that, however, if we just assume restrictive conditions is limited to just. Whatever. Uh, larger zone, a zone A property touches is, is the zone that it has to be in, so. It only relates to the lots on these arc of the circumference. Any lot inside, inside that is still three acre zone. And it would only affect people on the periphery, and if I had a, uh. A four acre lot or a ten acre lot or whatever on the edge. And just a tiny bit of it was touching the more restrictive. Four acre limit. I wouldn't be happy if I had this big lot like Peter Herbert, uh, his, his is all in zone A. Um, I wouldn't be happy if my lot got downsized to four acre zone. When most of it is in three acre zone. This. Wasn't a problem. Uh, meets and bounds are important way to, to define land. It just makes sense. This is antiquated, it doesn't make any sense. Even the United States of America mapped, if you look at the United States, every state is defined by meets and bounds. You don't see states with round borders. So meet and bounds is something that we should do because it's simple to do. We just have to determine. After. The zone C was created, what was doomed to, uh, four acres instead of three. That's when zone A had a problem because zone C was three acres, zone A was three acres, didn't make a difference. It still should be meets and bounds borders, not arcs. But help became when we went to four acres from three acres. That's what, that, that's when. Started to hurt me if I had a, a lot that was on the edge and most of it was in three acre zone and I got it all down zoned to that, so. What we have to think about, if restrictive condition is limited to. The most restrictive condition that that lot touched. We have to decide whether to, to change this, whether we make every lot that's on the arc. We, 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 we send the meets and bounds outside of that arc, so that one lot wouldn't be penalized and it would remain three acres open. Did I make sense just then?
Yeah. Actually, you did, yeah.
Okay, actually, usually I don't. So that's. We almost don't need to have all those maps and everything I did to, to talk about this because it's just. It's this one, if the restrictive conditions. Is just about. Downsizing or being penalized to the larger acreage requirement. That's what we have to address.
So, and that's specific to whether it, that it's on a circle, so if we change it to meets and bounds. Then we determine whose property, like if, if the, if it goes through part of someone's property. Uh, and we decide that we're going to take all of their property and put it into zone A. Then there's no.
But we, but then we could define their land. By meets and bounds and we could extend the, we could extend the arc to, to be co-located with meets and bounds. Our arc would not be a arc anymore, it would be like a, a skill saw blade, you know, it would be digs and jags and.
No, no, I understand, yep, I'm just saying that, you know, anyone who's property is, is, uh, divided by the current arc. Um, that property, all of it would be in zone A then, that's what you're.
No, that would be the. It would kind of be the fair thing to do and it wouldn't upset anyone. To have my land zone four acre when it used to be three. That would bother me because that'd affect the value of my property.
Or the, the restriction of what you can do with it, if you want to divide it.
Right, so I think we could, we could. Create this without the maps. We need the maps. A lot of work was done on the maps and it's good to have those maps for future reference, whatever that means. You know, who knows, fifty years from now, they might want a Kmart shopping center in zone A. They'd want meets and bounds for their definition because that's, that's the way the rest of the country goes, so. So I don't know what else we can say about zone A right now because. That's as complicated as it seems to me.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of the meets and bounds.
We're not, we're not changing a thing, nothing at all. We're just. Defining, we're not making extra lots, we're not, we're not doing anything, we're just. Giving the people that are inside this arc. Even though they may have bought their property after the ark was established a hundred years ago, uh, they shouldn't be penalized. And this doesn't, doesn't create, definitely, it doesn't create. It creates nothing that. It, it, it's, it's nothing lurking, riding along, piggybacking this decision, it's just defining the. The zone A. All right, that's enough for me.
I have a question about this.
Yep.
Um. Do we, do we have a rough idea about how many, uh. People are affected by this and if we proceed. Um, of course it goes to public hearing, but do we, do we send letters to all those parties affected?
No, I don't know. Did we send the letters to all the parties effectively when, when he went to four acres own?
No, because it wasn't specific. It wasn't specific to a, a collective of people. It was the whole town.
No, it was just, just, uh, zone C.
Zone C.
Well. Yeah.
Zone C is about ninety five percent of the town, so.
Yeah, I get your point.
So. Well, we can think about that because it, you know, you can try to make it more complicated. I'm not challenging you to make it more complicated, I mean, I, I can't make it any more complicated than what we just said in the last couple minutes.
We, we could do something like email blasts like we do for other things when we're trying to. Oh, notify a lot of people.
Oh, yeah, all right, so we can do that through the, the.
In, in addition to the regular, you know, public notices and.
We'd have to.
Otuses.
We'd have to keep it pretty simple because a lot of people don't understand, you know, zoning and regulations and. Things and, you know, we can't, there's no reason for anyone to panic or be concerned about this because no one will get hurt.
You're right, because we do, we do know what it involves, but they may not understand what it involves. That's, that's my point.
Yeah.
So education.
We could have a. I guess that's what a public hearing is for.
Right, and so we would have both maps and making sure that they're accurate. You know, updated because they might not be current now.
No.
You know, that's important, so.
That would be easy to do because Jimmy, when he made that map pretty for me, I think he made every lot on that that was gray. Was a lot that. As, you know, squeezed out of the, uh, the arc. And he did it great because it was a gray zone.
Yeah. Okay.
A gray, a gray area, I mean.
Gray area, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, and we can do a map so that it's clear. Of who was currently in zone A and then the additions to zone A.
Yeah, I can get that map done for next meeting.
That would be good for us to see.
When we have the table.
Yep, that would be great.
All right, so.
Even if we don't have the table, if we're still like this, we ought to, ought to be able to, you know, we can get it as an attachment. And we can look at it on our computers large enough and then we can, we can still have a discussion about it.
And I just keep searching. Is anything bad about this? Nothing, no one gets hurt, no one.
We won't know till the public hearing.
Yeah, right. Yeah. As long as it's clear, that's what we've learned.
No, give it simple and clear, all right. So that's that.
That sounds good.
We beat that to death in a short time, we got it done. Um, all right, so, I go on to the, uh. Anybody have any more questions on that?
Not right now.
Oh, okay, uh, chairman's report. Uh, just Karen pointed this out to me. Uh, you know, we're, we're a zoning commission of, you know. You know, complaint driven, you know. Basically, that's what we're planning on, but. In that Connecticut Federation of Planning and Zoning Agencies, that quarter newsletter, letter that, uh, this guy Stephen Burns writes. He does write some interesting things. I mean, it's pretty sad if I'm saying. State zoning things are interesting, but some of these things are, are interesting. And we, we beat this up a while ago with, uh, uh, short term rentals.
Oh, I saw, I thought that was very interesting.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just read it to you, uh, I don't. Where, can you, can you make, I don't want to say what I was going to say, uh, can you enlarge, enlarge my picture? No, you can't.
Oh, do you want me to read it? What do you?
Make, no, I can read it, I just.
Yeah, it, it went to everyone as a. In their email attachment, but I don't.
Yeah, it's just, uh, short term rentals not permitted as a single family dwelling. Uh. And this is from Massachusetts. This is a court in Massachusetts, but. It'll get to us sooner or later. And it says the court found that short term rentals do not, as they can. Conflict with the intended purpose, single family zone district, which is to have an area free of commercial transit uses. And instead provide stability and permanence which furthers a sense of community, so. You just, I don't know how many bed and breakfasts we have in Roxbury. I think we have a few.
Yeah, there are.
And, uh.
They're not bed and breakfasts.
No, they're.
The, the short term rentals, a lot of people.
Yeah.
And.
Well, that's a company, so we're.
That's a company, so we're not supposed to say that, but.
Exactly.
But I think, uh. You know, we kind of just said, well, it's not happening yet, so let's just let some other town write the regulation and, uh. But it may, it may start happening and once it gets, you know, if someone. Does short term rentals in their home. And I guess if it gets a precedent, be harder to stop it. Uh, but it, it does say that, uh, it does, it does affect. The sense of community and, uh. A judge ruled in Massachusetts, judges are judges, courts are courts. Uh, that this, uh, this couldn't be allowed, so.
Yep, it's just something for us to think about is.
Yeah. Can I, can I bring up a point here?
Oh, yeah.
Well, I, I tried to stress this few years back. Because. The board of selectmen kept telling zoning, do something. And I kept saying it should be an ordinance. A town ordinance. If zoning does something, the ones that are already in existence will stay in existence.
Right.
They're grandfathered in. If you do an ordinance, the ordinance goes back and gets everybody. So if you want to keep the ones that we got, then zoning can say from this day on, there will be no more. But that's going to leave all the ones that are there and we really don't know where they are. An ordinance will control everything.
The ordinance is just up to the three selectmen?
Well, it has to go to a public hearing.
Yeah, town.
Yeah, town votes.
But an ordinance has, to my knowledge, has more teeth in this type of thing because it goes backwards and gets all the other ones. But if zoning wants to take this on, because I was trying to battle this years ago, because we're going to lose. And all the ones that are in existence, and the fact is, we don't know how many we do actually have. There's a lot in Roxbury. A lot that we wouldn't, the new zoning regulation wouldn't even affect them.
Correct. Yep.
Well, I like to address all of them.
Yeah, and I think we'll have to, you know, we've had these conversations to talk about, you know. What, um. You know, is, are there complaints on them? Uh, is it this, what kind of an issue is this? That's, that's, you know, is it something that we're concerned about? Um, you know, do we want to figure out a way to regulate them? That's. There's a lot of, there's a lot of questions, you know, I'm not.
A lot of questions, but, uh, if, if I had a short term rental for my little guest house in front of my house, then there were. You know, a different family, kids and dogs and noise every two week, different two weeks, I wouldn't be happy. Having that as a neighbor. That certainly, uh. Takes the permanence, stability, the furthest, you know, my community. Presence or whatever it said here.
Yeah.
Uh, commercial transit, transit uses instead provide permanence which furthers sense of community, so.
I think it'd be interesting to see what people in town feel about it. I think it'd be interesting to see what people in town feel about it.
Um, I read the, the entire case, and this was rather extreme. They had, the rentals were a couple of days, and unfortunately, there was a shooting. There, there was some violence on the property, somebody was shot. So, the neighbors complained, etc., so this was an extreme case.
Yeah.
Now, this has been discussed at great length, I believe it was the Town of Warren, almost four years ago. Because we were going to the COG meetings and talking about this very same thing. And, uh, actually, we did, if you recall, we wrote something, or started to, we were going to give it to the Board of Selectmen, because they basically said, you guys do it, and we'll decide whether we want to go with an ordinance or not. It's not new, not new to the zoning commission, it's not new to the town. Um, they've been around for a long time. And we have had complaints back when I was, uh, on the board, we had some complaints, us. People were coming from other towns, buying properties and houses just to use for this purpose.
So, we as zoning commission, we as stewards of property values in Roxbury, does it be who us to initiate this? As an ordinance?
Yeah, we, we tried before. We had it, we got, we were on it, like, three years ago.
Well, let's, you know, I'll, I'll bring it up, just to find out if there's anything stirring.
The big issue we're kicking around is the, um, how the proximity of the owner of the property, to keep an eye on it. Some of these people live in Arizona, and their short-term rental is in Connecticut. It was all discussed back a while ago.
Yep.
Well.
Well, what, what year? Go ahead.
Yeah, these, these were absentee, they would rent out their houses for that short period, not be there at all. That's how it got out of control. So.
It's okay to rent your house out for a year or two, or long term. And you're not gonna.
Yeah, these were not, they were a couple of days, a weekend, a long weekend, for, uh, so, you know, that, yeah, parties and things, yeah, it got pretty, got pretty bad, and that, that was in the, uh, in the case notes, where they, uh, they summarized what their findings were.
Didn't Massachusetts decide that it had to be under 30 days, or something to be considered short-term?
Yes, it's under 30 days, yeah, yeah.
So longer than that isn't the same issue, it's.
Right, right, it was shorter than that.
It's the one week, two weeks, one month, that kind of thing, yeah.
Uh, yeah.
Okay. I'll bring it up, and I'll, I'll report back.
Rent a place to, you're not gonna rent a place for 30 days to have a one-weekend party, so.
Yep.
Depending on the number of days. That, that should be an ordinance, so.
Right. Yeah, that's what zoning decided back then, right?
The whole thing.
Jim is, Jim is absolutely right about that, yeah.
I think we ought to re-initiate. What is our Selectman pick of that?
I, I have a note, I'm gonna, I'm gonna research that and report back to you guys next time. I'm on it.
All right. So, that's taken care of, we're down to communications. I don't know of any communications. Does anyone know of any communications?
Nope, nope.
Okay, have I left anything out?
No, it's good.
All right.
It was a great meeting.
Yeah.
What's that?
It was a great meeting.
Oh, nice, got a little long, I was watching the clock here, but, uh, I had my Peppi's Pizza at 5:30. I had, I had two Peppi's pizzas, so I'm not hungry, although, I guess if I hadn't had dairy, I would be calling a meeting over sooner. Um, so, I'd like a motion to adjourn the meeting. I'm moving.
Elaine, I'll be happy to make a motion to adjourn.
All right, second?
A second.
10 seconds, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. All right. I think we got, it's really great to get things checked off, that was, uh,
Yep.
Great that we got character taken and half of, uh, purpose taken care of, finish that next.
Bill, I have one question. If we meet in person next month, are you bringing Peppi's Pizza?
I was thinking the same thing, Karen.
If you, if you make next, if you make the meeting next, what's it called again, a hybrid?
Yeah.
If we have a hybrid meeting, come hungry.
Okay. Someone needs to bring the beer. We'll have paper cups.
Volunteers, okay.
I'll bring wine, I'll bring the wine.
Well, we haven't, we haven't had one of those meetings yet for.
We haven't, we are overdue.
Yeah, we are.
All right.
If it gets really bad, we could go to the pavilion.
Oh, no, we can't, I don't think we can. I think this has to be available to the public.
Right.
All right.
Thank you, everyone, good night.
Good night.
Aye.
Thanks a lot.
Stay well.